All right, welcome to the September 24th, 2025, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Aparna.
Present.
Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Kopley.
Present.
Commissioner Gagné.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
And Vice Chair Wood here.
Present.
All right, and I am Chair Weston. I'd like to thank the following staff for being present tonight. Glenn Coyle, Odra Cardenas, Cameron Zapata, Quinn Kuhnhausen, and Chris Wyatt. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'm all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's approved. And then also a motion to approve the meeting summary from August 27th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and that is approved. Now it is time for us to hear public comment and items from the audience. I'd like to remind RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment in support of or opposition to ballot propositions, measures, or candidates, and we'll keep the comments to three minutes. Glenn?
Hi, we have one person signed up tonight, David Moran. Please come up.
All right, and you can start with your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. I'd like to speak on the proposed strategies and actions for the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan 2025 Refresh, an essential update to a vital city document. I want to commend staff for the comprehensive work and for building on the successes of the 2020 plan as shown in the Crosswalk Document. The shift from six focus areas to the five big moves framework provides a clear and powerful way to communicate the plan's priorities. I'm particularly supportive of making equity a foundational value. It's a significant step that aligns with Redmond 2050 policy. My review of the draft strategies and actions, along with the engagement summary, leads me to focus on two key areas. First, community empowerment and financial accessibility are critical. The engagement summary highlights that financial barriers are a major concern for residents. While the plan proposes incentives and outreach, it's crucial that programs are designed to be easily accessible, low-cost, and helpful to low-income households and vulnerable communities. The air purifier distribution program is a great example of this and demonstrates the city's commitment to community resilience and equity by providing immediate tangible relief. Second, the plan must prioritize measurable outcomes. The proposed strategies are excellent, but their success hinges on establishing clear, quantifiable metrics to track progress. This will ensure that Redmond is implementing actions and achieving its climate goals efficiently and effectively. Transparent, public-facing dashboards that report on progress build community trust and accountability, empowering residents to see the tangible impact of these strategies on our environment. My full comments submitted to staff underscore the importance of expanding the plan's scope to include other important actions such as monitoring an expanded list of key pollutants in drinking water and following health-based guidelines, promoting natural and green infrastructure solutions for stormwater runoff, and combining tree canopy expansion efforts with public education on urban forests, health, and the urban heat island effect. It's important to ensure that all proposed strategies are not only actionable but also financially and programmatically accessible to all members of the community. Let's make Redmond a healthy, sustainable, and resilient community for all. The 2025 Refresh will set a robust and effective course for the city's environmental future. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's everyone. All right, so we will move on to our study session on the general government portion of the Capital Facilities Plan 2050. Bringing up Cameron Zapata.
All right, good evening. So I'm here to present the Capital Facilities Plan 2050 General Government, what we're now calling or also calling CFP 2050, which was previously called the General Government Facilities Plan. So it went through a little bit of a name change. Staff will be seeking Planning Commission's recommendation to amend the Redmond 2050 Comprehensive Plan to adopt the CFP.
If you can just make your microphone a little bit more towards you.
Yes, is this better?
That's great.
All right, I'll scoot closer. All right, so as a refresher, the Capital Facilities Plan updates the current 2025 to 2030 CFP. It forecasts the future need of capital facilities to 2050 based on Redmond 2050 growth targets. It'll identify potential locations and expansions of facilities. It provides an analysis of how the city will finance capital facility projects within its funding capacity and identifies those funding sources. And then lastly, it updates the facilities' conditions and department needs of the 2019 Capital Facilities Plan. This project went before the Technical Committee on September 17th of this year, where the Technical Committee recommends approval based on the decision criteria for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment per RZC 2176070J, and staff's analysis can be found in the attachment of the Technical Committee Report. Planning Commission review and recommendation is based on the criteria in 2176070J for that comp plan policy amendment, and it also additionally Capital Facilities Policy 2, which requires the plan include the necessary components to satisfy the minimum requirements of RCW for capital facilities planning. And so here's just a deeper dive of that decision criteria, which again, the analysis can be found in the Technical Committee Report as part of your agenda. Here's the criteria listed. I won't read it word for word, but you can see that it does meet the criteria for the zoning code decision criteria. And then the following slides will show the criteria of CF2, the policy within Redmond 2050, and the plan meets the criterion, and the analysis can again be found in your Technical Committee Report, which is included in your Planning Commission packet. So we'll take a deeper dive into the CFP. And the plan's divided up into four different sections. This includes the planning context, which explains the regulatory requirements that shape the plan, Redmond's municipal facilities, and then the overall citywide portfolio assessment. It also includes the portfolio overview, where we look at the capital or the facilities' condition assessment, the service life analysis, and rankings across the city's facilities. Third, we have the existing conditions and recommendations, which summarizes major issues, condition ratings, and alternatives, along with recommendations for fire, police, public works, parks, and recreation, and administrative facilities. And then last, we have the capital investment strategy, and this outlines the near-to-long-term strategies and includes a feasible implementation plan and highlights the benefits of the CFP in reducing risk, addressing facility needs, strengthening emergency preparedness and resiliency, and also improving services for underserved communities across Redmond. And here are the facilities that are occupied by city staff, and it includes buildings which support fire, police, maintenance and operations, indoor recreation, and administration. And it doesn't include Fire District 34, utilities, any ancillary park buildings, or non-city occupied buildings. And then I'll just also wanted to note that there are separate processes underway for the MOC and the Old Firehouse Teen Center. Based on information from existing documents like the 2023 Capital Facilities Condition Assessment, Redmond 2050, the Fire Functional Plan, as well as site tours and staff interviews, these high-level findings were gathered. This includes that facilities are in reasonably good condition, except for a few fire stations. Multiple buildings will reach their end-of-life service life before 2050. There are some underserved areas, particularly in Overlake, and environmental improvements from electrification can improve environmental performance. And then lastly, emergency preparedness needs can be met by adequate maintenance funding along with other measures. The plan shows the importance of maintenance, and that proactive maintenance handles small issues before they spiral into larger problems. Proper maintenance can extend the service life of facilities and prolong the time between major reinvestments, which can save public dollars. Most efficiencies and renewals, they will be addressed by funding routine maintenance and/or major renovations. The projects are then listed out in the capital investment strategy, and they're prioritized into four buckets. This includes near term, which includes projects that are currently underway, and in our future 2027 to 2032 CIP. There's the medium term. These would be facilities that were identified as most critical based on qualitative facility rankings like conditions, service gaps, and community needs. Then there's long term. These aren't urgent today, but essential for supporting the long-term population growth and service demands of 2050. And then lastly, we have the beyond 2050 bucket. But I also wanted to point out that the continued funding of routine maintenance is essential to keeping our facilities up and running, and you'll see that throughout the project So these next slides, they're going to give an overview of the major projects that are to come in the next 25 years for each functional area, and the extensive project list can be found in the Capital Facilities Plan, starting on page 85. So we'll first go over fire. Near term, we have the remodel at Fire Station 11, and this includes the apparatus bay extension, a renovation and replacement study, and then an implementation of that study, and then tenant improvements for leased warehouse. Medium-term projects include land acquisition and a new station for Fire Station 12, and lifecycle renovations for Station 16. And then beyond 2050, we have the relocation of Stations 11 and 19 to better serve downtown. Moving on to police, for medium-term projects, we have the replacement of the Public Safety Building and land acquisition for an Overlake precinct, and the long term, we'll have the construction of the new Overlake precinct. For maintenance and operation, indoor recreation and administration, some of the near-term projects include addressing the Old Firehouse Teen Center, completion of the MOC, a reinvestment study for the Redmond Community Center at Marymore Village, and medium-term projects include a replacement study for the pool and lifecycle renovations here at City Hall. And then lastly, we have long-term projects, which includes a new community center in Here's a cost summary graphic for the projects. They are color-coded by functional areas. You can see that throughout the different timelines, a bulk of the spending isn't just focused in one functional area, but spread throughout the different functional areas. Here's the revenue sources based on timeframes. The CFP doesn't commit specific funding sources. These sources are assumed based on our current and projected funding sources, and also want to note that paying with cash is generally not feasible for most cities. Common methods for securing funds include council-manic, voter-approved, and revenue bonds, as well as impact fees. Specific funding strategies, they'll be determined during the budgeting process for those specific projects. And that's all I have for you. Thanks for your attention, and I can help to answer any questions.
Right, so I think what we're going to do is we're going to start with the Issues Matrix for existing questions from last time, and then we'll start adding in, and we can kind of just go round robin, everyone choosing your most important issues, and we'll work down the list with our hour.
Do you want me to read?
Sure.
So the first question that we received was what facilities are eligible for the development incentives under RZC 2155? And so staff helped to identify the following projects that could apply those incentives. This includes the Overlake Administrative Annex, the Overlake Community Center, and the pool construction replacement.
Okay, and were there any in Marymore? I had thought I remembered that there were.
These were the only projects that I was able to identify. You can double-check to see if there are any more.
Yeah, Jeff Churchill had researched this, and this is what is explicitly noted, but what has been noted is that there's flexibility in some of these kind of incentives, but this is what is explicitly called out.
Okay, that's helpful. This is good to close, then. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question was, how is sustainability incorporated into the Capital Facilities Plan? It includes the city's approach to decarbonization and sustainability in the Facilities Planning Principles section. The plan references key documents, including, excuse me, the 2024 Portfolio Decarbonization Report, the 2021 City of Redmond Operation Zero Carbon Strategy, the 2020 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, and then we've been working alongside Jenny with the 2025 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. And Redmond has adopted ambitious goals for city operations, including achieving a net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. Redmond's also participating in the King County Cities Climate Collaborative, KC4, which calls for 25% reduction in energy use in all existing buildings compared to 2012 to by 2030. And then all new facilities must meet LEED gold or similar green building standards.
I was pleased with the response. I appreciate it. Thanks. We can close that.
Thank you. And then the third and final question was from the 2019 Facility Strategic Master Plan. How is it determined that 73% of the facilities require investment by 2030? So the 2019 Facility Strategic Master Plan, that was the, I guess, currently adopted, or the current CFP, and so it found that 73% of the city facilities will require investment by 2030, and it's based on two factors, the facility condition and functional performance. Facility condition was assessed by, was evaluated by assessing whether a facility had no more, or no major needs, major deficiency, minor deficiencies, or required near-term investments. And functional performance was evaluated by assessing whether a facility had no major needs, minor deficiencies, notable deficiencies, or required near-term investments. In general, facilities identified as needing near-term investments based on condition or those with notable deficiencies or near-term investments required based on functional performance were classified as facilities requiring investment by 2030. And the CFP 2050 incorporates findings from our 2023 Capital Facilities Condition Assessment, which inform the capital, sorry, the Facility Condition Assessment Index, FCI, a measurement of the relative condition of facilities. Overall, most Redmond facilities are in reasonably good condition, with the exception, again, of Fire Stations 11, 12, and 13, as well as significant issues at the Old Firehouse Teen Center. The FCI results are provided in the CFP, page 30.
And that was me. Thank you. Yeah, that's a really thorough answer. It makes a ton of logical sense in how you've looked at that, so thank you.
Thank you.
We can close this.
Great. All right, so now that we've actually seen the plan, do people have additional questions or comments to add to the matrix? Commissioner Aparna. And we'll just start with our first most important, and then we'll go around and go from there.
So I have, just for the record, I have emailed all these questions, so they can be added as is into the matrix, but for the listening public and for the rest of the commission, the current facilities element talks about some policies, and I feel that there are some that are not mentioned as key policies that should be addressed. Mainly FWCR2, which is Ensure City Services, Infrastructure, and Community Members Are Resilient to Climate Impacts. There's a slew of subpolicies as part of that section, which I think are related to this plan and the plan's intent. And so I think maybe we should consider adding these policies as key elements to the plan. That was the first question. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Do you want a response now or just wait until it's in the?
I think we can just have them address it, because this actually, it sort of sets up the next set of questions, which probably need a little more, kind of, a little more time for research. So I would prefer to just put it out there and leave it for now.
Okay. Are the following two questions, do you want to add them in now since they're related?
Yes, but I thought we were doing the roundtable thing, so.
All right, do you have enough information for that? Okay, great. Commissioner Van Nyman.
This is not for the Issues Matrix, because it has to do more with the format of the document as opposed to a specific issue. Once I dug in enough, I really appreciated the organization of it and the color coding and all that, but it did take me kind of a couple passes to really understand, and I felt like I needed my handheld a little bit more to understand where we were going and how it was organized. I really appreciate being told, like specifically, because on like page 22 was the first time where I'm like, looking at this chart, and it has the by, you know, short-term, medium-term, long-term, and broken out by police, fire, administrative. And so there is something that says you can find the details in Sections 3 and 4. And it does say that, but I felt like it needed a little bit more, like, maybe even links to that would be helpful, because the main thing that jumped off the page at me when I'm looking at that first kind of summary chart was, holy moly, look at that $200 million that's sitting there for administrative. What is that? And I wanted to know right away. I didn't really want to wait till I got to page 60. I wanted to know why was that administrative bucket for that medium-term or short-term even so big? And like, compared to the rest of the document, it really jumps off the page at you. And so what I would have liked at that point would have been to have some sort of hyperlink that would take me directly to that part of the document.
So that actually sounds to me like an Issues Matrix question, especially because it's around clarity of communication, and that's like very much our purview.
And I also would, in addition to the, I think the hyperlinks would take care of a lot of it, but just a little bit more verbiage around really clearly telling the reader the specifics for this, you're going to find on these pages. Because even listening to page numbers would have helped, instead of just saying pages three or parts three and four, to show me exactly where I could go to find that, the drill-down information on fire and police and such. But it's, like I said, once I kind of got the hang of it, it's really well-laid out.
So if I could actually piggyback on that, if you go to the introduction on page four, there is a section at the second half of that that says the report is organized into four sections, but if that was a little bit more verbose and had a little bit more.
I thought about that too, because it is, it is an introduction, and I didn't know how much you wanted to put in there, but you could add a few more words to really help the reader understand, this is where we're going with this. We're going to break this out this way.
Right. Okay, great. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Kopley.
In the estimated revenue sources, the colors that are shown for the different categories of revenue didn't seem to me to match up to the colors on the names of those to the right. So for example, just one that came to mind is like the REET, R-E-E-T. I could not find that color, which I think was white, anywhere in the color wheel, and there were a couple other colors I just didn't feel like matched with some of the different revenue categories, so I'm not sure if, I just didn't understand that correctly or what the deal was.
That's both great comments, so I've noted them.
I'm going to jump in here with one. I would love a cross-link to understand what the emergency preparation expectations are for the different facilities, so, because I think that really changes, just looking at like Grasson has no buildings, I don't, like that whole area has no buildings. And so, and like, for example, to get from Grasson, where I live, to downtown, if there was ever a substantial earthquake or like tree damage, there are bridges, there's, it's not a huge distance, it's maybe a mile plus, but it's, it could easily be impassable. So like expecting people to get there for water distribution, or heat, or phone charging, or that sort of thing in an emergency is actually a little bit unrealistic. So just understanding better what the plans are for those neighborhoods. I realize it's not very high population compared to what we're projecting for Overlake, for example, but it's still, there's still need there. So I'm sure this is covered in a different plan somewhere, but possibly cross-linking in Issues Matrix would be really useful. Great, thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
I was sort of reflecting on the other conversations we've had around the fire stations and the, you know, various commentary about, we haven't, you know, it's literally a big problem because we didn't look at it 10, 15 years ago. And when I look at the plans, the thing that I was expecting to see was like, hey, fire stations are number one. Like, if we don't get those right now, you know, it's a problem, but it feels like they're still part of a longer plan versus they're the most important priority we should have compared to some of the others. So I'm just curious, like, why the sort of fire stations and renovations and replacements of those weren't kind of like priority number one? Is there a reason for that? I'm just wondering if there's a point. Glenn?
I can chime in. It was noted in the previous presentation, this is for build-ins, build-ins only. There's a Fire Functional Plan, which Planning Commission recently recommended. All of that information you were asked about was pulled from that plan verbatim and put into this, but just the build-ins. So a lot of the stuff you're referring to, prioritization and things like that, that's addressed in the Fire Functional Plan. So really, we're just pulling in a subset of build-ins from that fire plan into this, because as Cameron had noted, parks oversees the actual build-ins of the city, which can be kind of confusing. Parks oversees the fire build-ins, but not the fire equipment and operations and stuff, which is handled by the Fire Department.
And like, but the other, that's not the case for these other, am I getting this wrong? Like, the other parts to this plan are, were part of that too, outside the fire plan? I'm trying to compare the projects for the police, et cetera, in relation to that. Am I, I'm just?
Yeah, we don't have it, we could pull it up. There's a little Venn diagram that we had created, I think it was shown in the previous presentation, that kind of showed where the Capital Facilities Plan covers, and there's some overlap with park, police, and fire, whereas our transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater are separate plans that aren't covered under the Capital Facilities because they're not build-ins. And that's hard to verbalize, but I think there's, if you refer back to the previous meeting presentation, or if we can find a link to that and provide that to you, that will show the Venn diagram of what this plan covers.
It's a Venn diagram, it's fun. I'm just, I'm just actually, mine's just a direct question, like, why isn't fire the number one priority?
I, it's not an issue of priority, this is really just a list of projects.
But the dates, but the dates suggest priority, do you know that? Like, if it was a priority, wouldn't it be the earliest dates of things you'd have on there? That's my question.
Well, no, not necessarily.
It's related to their own functional area, and they have their own prioritization. It's related to their own functional area and they have their own prioritization. And then ultimately, that's a council decision on what is financed. But I would refer back to the fire functional plan to see the methodology of how that was financed. But in terms of the city budget, and this is going to be on the scope of this plan, but the city budgets by different functional areas, different functional areas generally aren't prioritized over the others. Parks is always going to get funded, fire, police, water, wastewater. They have almost separate streams of funding. So to say one thing is prioritized over the others, not necessarily the most accurate kind of statement, because they each have their own plan and processes that are all come together during the city's budget process.
Yeah, I just frankly find that odd, but.
So maybe even just capturing that explicitly in the issues matrix would be helpful. Because I can, I can appreciate that confusion, like it makes, I understand the way it's being done, but what you're saying.
Yeah, I just, I get that, get the process. I'm just saying, I think it just seems strange to me that it's not like, hey, now we've done all that, what is the number one thing we should go after with our budget? That's all. That's the only question I'm asking. That's, that's why I was a bit confused, Glenn. I appreciate it.
And that's a council decision ultimately, so yep.
All right. In response, Aparna.
So I actually wanted to kind of, like, when you look at multiple facility plans, see obviously all the departments are submitting their own stuff. Now, if we, I get that we are behind on the fire thing and we're all a little bit panicking about it. So we're thinking, why aren't we going all out on this in terms of budget priorities? But it is also a question of, we need public safety, we need all the rest, otherwise that goes to seed. And then buildings catch up, it's a, it's a much longer process. So from what they have done in the fire plan has been to say, let's go after the things like, I've done facility assessments, so I can speak to the fact that there is going to be give and take and there is going to be compromise in terms of how much you're going to extend, which building's life you're going to extend to what systems. Now, you could get into the integrities of, does the warehouse TI become a higher priority than fire station 12? But the, like he said, it's, the budget is being split into multiple things. It's not, the budget is not one line item for capital facilities, right? The budget is what's being given to fire, what's being given to police? Because you can't let one system at the, I agree, we should front load the fire thing, but that's a council decision and it kind of becomes moot for us to discuss it. But from what I'm seeing, the plan, the fire stations which are going in further, like for me, I have a question of priorities as to why Overlake, all the acquisition has to come in medium term when we're looking at significant growth in the near to medium term. So if we are going to build out all the, the safety facilities for Overlake, after everything is built, I'm finding that very difficult to wrap around. So I'm guessing that there's a lot of give and take, but I think it's also softer because council could get up and say, hey, no, I want that first, right? And that, we don't have a say in that.
Yeah, just one last comment. I, I understand council's thing, totally get that. And respectfully, like in a business environment and you've got multiple budgets, you put them together and then you would actually then go and prioritize across all of them to say what's the most important thing to go and what's second? That's what was confusing me here. And I, I get there's a different process. So we can close this, but I was just trying to press on it to understand, because I think other people might ask the same question.
Or maybe close this conversation, but keep the issue in the issues matrix because it was a good question. Okay, great.
Actually, we should have this as a section in, in the plan. As a narrative to say, hey, this is how, this question is very valid. And I don't think it's just for the issue matrix. So if there's a good response, say, this is how we prioritize it, it's a good narrative for the plan, I would think.
I think, I think we've already captured that question, so that'll be.
No, but that'll be in the issue matrix. I'm saying add it to the narrative of the plan. It's, I think it's worth a good response, a good section for the readers and the public to say, hey, this is why it's happening. We are not the only ones having these questions as to why this is near term and that. What is the process which has gone through that? That's not clear in the plan. So it's a very good question.
Let's add both of you to that item in the issues matrix, both answering the question and evaluating how it should be showing up in the plan.
Sounds good.
All right. Next items. Vice Chair Woodier.
I had a quick question, that of scope. Is the contingency plans around the budget part of the scope of this conversation or is that part of the functional plans?
Can you?
So I'm looking at the, the revenue sources and I see that almost a quarter of the revenue source is coming from REETs. So given market volatility that we see today and that we're going to be projected to be seeing in the foreseeable future, I'm wondering whether there is any guardrails or any contingency measures to assure that that funding is captured so that these investments are funded.
Yep. Great question. Glenn's on it.
That's really a finance question, but to, to kind of level set again, this is a very high level plan that looks out 25 years. This is almost really a guesstimate of potential funding sources. This isn't locked in, but our finance department, our finance director tried to do, I guess you could say, a best guess kind of based on current conditions of where that potential revenue could potentially come from. Again, it gets fuzzier and fuzzier the further we go out. But under state law, it says that we at least need to identify sources of realistic type of sources of funding. And we also try to at least do some percentages. Again, how those, that actually plays out when we go to putting that in the budget, whether that's in the next budget or it's in a budget 15 years from now, that's when those details will really start to, to come into more clarity. And it said, this is a snapshot in time, the financing aspect. You know, when we update the plan in six to 10 years, if not sooner, it could be all different by then. So.
Any follow up?
It is not a financial plan. It's really just.
And it's not a budget. It's, it's identifying here's where it could come from. But I think your point about REETs is valid.
I'm thinking about my taxes. No, it helps put dimension to how practical and how pragmatic and how executional this, this guidance is. That's the reason why I asked the question.
And we'll just say that this plan is written to meet state law requirements.
All right. Anyone else, round one? Commissioner Gagne?
I emailed a few questions over the weekend. I won't repeat all of them, but I'll just share sort of the two top ones for me and they're similar, similarly related. One of the decision criteria listed here was the potential impacts on our vulnerable communities. And so I was curious how the city gathered feedback specifically from the vulnerable communities. And I think that the 2050 plan carries a, right, a very heavy emphasis on equity. I know we have a lot of folks in our community who care deeply about that. And if there was maybe a little more that, right, gave a fuller picture of how those considerations are made, how feedback is captured. And then secondarily, I, was a curiosity question about how the city does outreach, because we have a richly diverse community specifically to folks in our community for whom English isn't their first language and how is, you know, their feedback captured?
Specific to this plan or generally? Great. Great, thank you. All right, around two. Commissioner Aparna.
So this is continuing with the resilience concept. So what I see, if, if, if we agree that the policies on resilience need to be added, then we are looking at a few questions about the resilience of the facility specifically related to material specifications. And so there are a bunch of sub-questions. I know we've got a, we've got a policy in Redmond 2050 which explicitly calls out material specifications. So I would like to kind of understand if that is something we can add in as something that all the capital facilities will look at. And it can be just one study for all the facilities that look at the best possible external, exterior materials, cladding, concrete, roofing, so that we are capturing the change in climate conditions and increasing the durability. So concrete mixtures, specs tend to kind of float through time as is, you know? And so an actual intentional exercise where you're looking at, this is the best concrete mix given extreme heat events to significant wet weather events to colder. So we are seeing these extremes and some of our mixtures are not going to work. Some of our materials for the standard specs may not work. So my request is that there's a whole slew of questions related to that. So if, I'm just going to leave it there for it to be added and answered. But if we are serious about resilience, this is an opportunity for us to not build new facilities and then have them break down, crack and go through maintenance or renovations much quicker. We have to look long term. It's also the sustainable thing to do and in the long run, it will save us money. So it's good for the city from various aspects. So I request you to add this. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in with one. So I had a question about the section on well number four on page 78. This is in the municipal campus section. This seemed sort of alarming because it's a talk about a well has already been taken offline. There is a potential for PFAS treatment facility, which I think people would appreciate if needed. It require more than half an acre and then additional heavy metals that also might need to be filtered using green sand. But I, the only mention I see of this is on page 78. So I don't see it in any other tables or charts or any of the final piece. So I'm, I, either this feels like it shouldn't be in this section or it feels like a much bigger thing that should be.
So this is actually just noting the campus that we have this well. So this is outside the scope of this plan. It's just noting that there is a well on campus and that as we redevelop the campus over time, that's just a consideration.
Okay.
This is actually, the wells belong under one of the other facility, like water.
Okay. In that case, I have a strong recommendation that you add a link right at the beginning of the section, that this is already covered in a different plan. And like link to that plan and then also say that it's, a summary is just here in case the other facility or like the main campus facility is renovated. Because this actually read very alarming and it didn't, it's pretty deep down in.
Thank you. Commissioner Kopley, do you still have a comment?
One of the key findings was that emergency preparedness is a continued need. When I read that, I didn't quite understand what level of gravity that had. So does that mean that emergency preparedness is currently deficient? Or that it continues to be something that we find to be important? But just it appearing as a key finding made me feel like it would be good to know more about that.
Thank you. Others. Commissioner Coleman.
I was, just a question on that, like the estimated revenue sources, which I think is in 2021. There's, there were sort of two things in here. One was, I wasn't sure if the numbers are 2025. A lot of numbers go down, right, from 2027 through to 2050, the totals in each of those, each of the separate buckets. That was a question, but associated with that is, it was just a general question. We've got 28% that are utilities in the next, from 27 to 32, and utilities disappear in the other two. Is there a reason why that's the case?
I think what you're referring to is the Maintenance and Operations Center. That is the city's biggest project right now and will be for the next probably five to eight years. We're doing a ma, a master plan redevelopment of the operations center. That's near Costco, kind of Fred Meyer's, that big facility there. So that's going to be a big chunk of our capital budget over the next period before we start to focus on other facilities.
This is revenue sources. It's page, is it page 24? Which page is it? I don't know. It's, it's, it's the three donuts page. I'm just curious, like 28% is in gray. And I was like, what's gray? It's utilities and it's not in any of the, in any of the others. So I was just curious why utilities is 28% of that.
Again, I, we would have to check on that, that, but it's related to the Maintenance and Operations Center renovation. But we, we can check with finance on how those numbers were generated.
It just seems strange, like over a quarter of the budget is in one place and it just disappears in the other two years. Just be good to kind of understand what that is, because again, other people might look at it and go, it seems a bit odd.
Yeah. And the MOC is for like our public works, like staff out in the field as well as park operations. So my guess is that it's probably because utilities, public works, they, it's.
Connected, so connected. Okay. Yeah, because it's good to know that.
We'll look further into it.
Thank you. All right. Another one from me. I was looking, I know we covered this briefly in the prior, in the prior discussion, but I'd really like to see the art studio at Grasslon reconsidered as a capital facility. And the reason that I just wanted to bring it up again, so it fits under both indoor recreation programming location and e-prep. And we had it, this has been built since this plan was last redone. And I know when we did the park plan, it hadn't been like pulled in yet for that. So I just want to make sure that there wasn't an error. I know that there were a bunch of people who worked at the city who left in that timeframe too and COVID. So I just want to make sure that it's accounted for if it should be. There shouldn't be any costs associated with it because it's a brand new building. But just so that it's available for the, just on the list, on the maps, it seems like it should be there to me.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gagne?
I have two quick questions for curiosity sake, not the issue matrix. The public safety building that is talking about being replaced in 2030-ish, is it the building that's just immediately across that currently has a police and the prosecutor's office over there?
Yes, it's the police, the police station.
Okay. And then when, as I'm reading through the table that's created and you talked about the decision criteria and you're, you're matching the plan against the state requirements, everything in the status looks as meets. So the, just the question that I have to help me understand how that is evaluated. Is there a goal ever to exceed what the statute requires? Or is it just looking at the design plan to see if it, if it meets? Like is there ever, is it just checking to see if it meets criteria?
I think that's an ambiguous question because ultimately we're writing the plan to, to what the Redmond zoning code. And really the checklist says, does it meet this criteria? How we quantify or qualify what exceeds means? Because again, this is a planning document. It's long term. It's very high level. Really, the intention is to make sure that we're meeting requirements. But generally speaking, as a city, as staff, we're always trying to, and remember, a document is a separate thing than an actual plan. The document is really a documentation of the plan. So what the city does in terms of its operations and things like that, we're always trying to exceed the minimum requirements.
I just, I just wanted to understand, how is that, you know, is that just?
Yeah. So this is really a checklist that shows. But again, we would refer back to, I believe it's appendix or no, appendix A in the technical committee report where there's a little bit more narrative explaining how that's met.
Thank you.
Did you have a second question?
I did ask my two.
You did. Okay. Thank you.
One was purely rapid fire.
There we go. All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Coleman.
Mine is purely a curiosity question, because I'm really interested in the Redmond pool. Somewhere in, I, I thought I'd read somewhere here that I saw the word aquatic center in the future. What is the plans from a budget perspective here? Because I see it's like a study, there's a, there's a, there's a amount for a Redmond pool study estimate. And then I was curious like what, what's in here around what's the replacement? Because obviously the pool, the school went through a big renovation. But we're looking a long way ahead, so I'm just curious what the, if there's any information you have around that.
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
Yeah. So the Redmond pool that got renovated recently, obviously by 2050, it would be, been around for 30 years or, or longer. In here, there's, there's budget for a Redmond pool assessment or something like that, I think is the term. And then I thought I read somewhere about. And then I thought I read somewhere about the term aquatic center. So I was curious, like, what, what's the actual plans from a Redmond pool's perspective? Is it a Redmond pool renovation there, or is it some plan ahead? And I know Glenn's going to say, hey, we've got plans for 50 years out, who knows what will happen, right? But what's the, I'm just curious, like, if there's, what the plans are around there that, if anything.
So it's literally what's in the plan that, that it's going to be looked at in the future, um, but I know that's kind of not the best answer, but that question actually came up last night at the council study session we had on this, and, um, Director Hamilton kind of elaborated a little bit more on that. So I, I would, we can either put a link or something, or I would just say, take a look at last night's study session, because she articulates it a lot better than I could attempt to on that.
Yeah, this, don't worry, send me a link. I, I'll, I'll check it out myself, I was just curious. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I encourage all to look at the study session on this plan last night from council.
Right. All right. Anyone else for the issues matrix for our public hearing next session? Yeah, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. And with that, that was our major items, so now we're on to staff and commissioner updates. Glenn?
Uh, yeah, just, just to piggyback on this discussion, yeah, October 8th is the public hearing on that, so, uh, folks can't make the meeting, please let us know as soon as you can, just to ensure that we have quorum. Cameron's also going to be out for that meeting, so, um, we just mentioned Director Hamilton, she's actually going to be on hand, um, is the park representative for this plan on that, so, might be, uh, might be a little, not to throw in the firing line, but maybe it'll help answer some, some of your questions there too. But beyond that, um, getting away from that, I also wanted to note that, you know, quarterly, we change our staff liaison for, um, the planning commissioner, planning commission, so just want to note that, uh, Odera Curnis here will be due in the next quarter. Um, I'll still be here, I'm, I'm helping her transition and I'm also helping on some of these plans, so, um, we're kind of, you know, we'll, we'll both be here, but, uh, Odera will be the lead on that, so, um, and she helped kind of prepare for, for this meeting, because I was on vacation, so, did a really great job and, um, yeah.
So that's starting next time?
Yeah, so the October 8th meeting.
Lovely.
But the work actually, for that meeting, uh, probably your folks don't realize, but we actually are starting now, uh, preparation for the next meeting, so.
You're always two steps ahead of us.
Two weeks ahead.
All right, any commissioner updates? Commissioner Coleman?
Yeah, I'm not here on the 8th of October, I'll be in the UK. I didn't mention that last time, but just wanted to let you know that.
Yes, thank you. Um, and I also have, Commissioner Gagne, a sec? No, Van Iman, next time. Okay, good. Um, I have one update, or actually two. So the first one, the major one, is just, I attended the Eastside Housing Equity Coalition's event at the Together Center last week, um, on September 10th, and this was a follow-up. They'd had a film fest in May, um, talking about affordable housing and equity in the community. Um, and so this was a lunchtime conversation, um, I don't know what the beeping is. All right, we'll, we'll proceed, hopefully it's not serious.
It was a serious one. All the lights have been flashing, it's really loud, so.
All right, but, um, they'd had a lunchtime conversation talking about just equity and what that looks like and fairness, and it was just, it was a nice conversation. It was very much in line with what we've discussed for 2050, um, but there were representatives, both staff and commissioners and then community, um, from Redmond, Kirkland to Bellevue, so it was nice to get a little bit more of a regional conversation going, um, and I just appreciated them hosting it. And then, um, a second smaller thing that I'm sure we'll talk about more when the transportation plan comes back, I've been watching with interest, um, up in Grasslon at the middle school and the high school. So this is Rose Hill Middle School and Lake Washington High School, um, the e-bike situation this fall. Um, so the high school has actually had enough interest and e-bike traffic that they are installing more bike racks, so this is in addition to the new ones they installed last year. They're installing an entire third set in their ongoing safety conversations, so, um, that's just been interesting to watch play out. Um, and I'm not involved, I'm totally just watching, but it's topical for us here. And then, um, the middle school has done a lot to try to improve safety, just in terms of actually requiring, um, like, a max number of children per bicycle, for example, and helmet usage, and, yeah. So, I know, no, you're only allowed one passenger. Um, but it's just, it's really interesting to see that happening so fast. It's making a really big change in the way the roads work in the mornings and the afternoons after school. So I just wanted to, um, mention it, because I know this has been interesting for us with transportation, um, and I don't have a lot of visibility into what's happening on Education Hill, um, at that level, but if anyone has visibility, that would be an interesting update at some point. Um, Commissioner Aparna, any updates?
Not updates, but adding to that, um, e-bikes and scooters, they are on all three lanes now. They are on the pavement, they are on the bicycle lane, and they are on the road. So let us mull, when it comes in front of us, hopefully, staff will bring us a solution, otherwise, we need to really figure this out, because there were several people zipping through, so like, when I see an e-bike, I'm, I'm slowing down in the car, because I'm not sure what they are going to do next, right? Because they're going at similar speeds, except that they have three different places they can go. And, um, that's, that's all over Redmond and all the areas too, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, I know this is a catnip topic, but just thought I'd bring it up. Commissioner Coleman?
Um, yeah, more catnip here, um, because someone nearly hit me today, where, where the kid, he was, he looked about 12 on one of these, and I was on the pavement and he wasn't looking when I was crossing the road. So just, just an observation, because we know this is, is, it's a serious issue in this here. The thing I was going to add though was, I had a, I have to dig it out, a friend of mine sent me, actually sent my wife, um, how, an approach they're using in West Lynn, down in Portland area, and let's see if I can pull it up, in terms of how they're thinking about this topic. It's not just school, it's, it's, it's around the area as, as well, so I'll see if I can find that.
If you could send it to the planning commission alias and then, um, we can all read, that would be great.
Will do.
All right, any, any other updates? Okay, in that case, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then we are adjourned.